I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Some move to accept the ad for the...
I second that motion.
All in favor? The next board of selectmen meeting, the regularly scheduled one, will be September 24th at 2018 at 5:30 PM in the West Bath Town Office. There will be a special meeting tomorrow afternoon beginning at 4 o'clock in the West Bath Town Office. Just for public information and celebration, we have two candidates for the Board of Selectmen. One is Madeline Hennessy and the other is Mark Travis. And for the West Bath School Board of Directors to fill two vacancies, we have two candidates, Keith Hines and Joanne Powers. And note to the public, everyone, please come vote on what's the date? November 6th at the West Bath Fire Department Social Room.
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight. Any other announcements from anybody? Is there anyone else that I want to just say anything about? Citizens comments? Hereinda? Do we have any department workgroup reports? Maybe this is the place to put, just make notes that the West Bath Library Committee has met and they are studying the question about how best to provide library services for the town of West Bath. They seem to be hard at work and working on a number of issues with library services. And thanks to them. Yes, sir?
Two quick updates. The, another email from Phil Carberry today from Augusta on comp planning due and he's staying shut and meet until November when the debt is in. So he's gonna hold off. And suggest the town's committee does the same thing, don't bother to meet because...
Okay.
And he also suggested that possibly Mike and Val be with us.
Oh, that would be good.
Which is the change of pace, so that's gonna be here.
Yeah.
The energy committee, we went through with the gentleman last week, town office, fire station, the school for electric bills. And hopefully by next week, sometime I'll get a report and I'll follow it to the town office.
Excellent.
Just on electricity, not the windows, doors, roof cover, just electricity.
Does a separate company do that?
Yes, and he's got, you get a few names of other companies that'll do that part of it.
Oh, good.
At some point.
We want to be efficient. Also, I want to note about committees, I have posted the committee openings still available back on the website now that we're over the nomination.
Have you had several people sign up for the Al-Wise Committee yet?
Not yet. But Marine Resources has been out claiming, so maybe, maybe now that they're back meeting again, I can encourage them.
One member from the town.
Just one, just one.
One member.
Marine Resources meets on the 26th. I'll see if I can remember to ask one of the gentlemen.
It's only two or three meetings here, it's just a little bit of commitment.
Two or three meetings?
Yeah.
That's good to know.
We'll get you a little table when you're stuffing envelopes on Wednesday and you can drum up some business when you come back.
That's gonna happen Wednesday, right? Stuff an envelope.
10 o'clock? Julie hasn't said yet, but...
Yeah, she's printing them tomorrow, we'll stuff Wednesday.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
How many stuffers do we have lined up?
You two and Kathy Perry will be there as well after her third year of stuffing, she's very excited.
10 o'clock, 10 o'clock.
Alright, that's good to know. We probably should also say, well, we're noting this as a workgroup report, the search committee for the town administrator received 20 applications and we have begun reviewing those. And we meet again tomorrow on the same, same commitment, same job. Okay, are we ready? Commitment. So Julie... David, did you want to say something? Julie worked up three possibilities. And we have them in our packets. We also have the working copies ready to be signed. So she had prepared three sets of documents. One proposing a mill rate of 11.11, one at 11.2, which was the rate for last year, and the other one at 11.4. As you'll note, Kathy, you've never confronted this piece of business. So on the, on the front page, this would be the 11.2 and this would give us the overlay of 11.2, keeping it at this year, at this last year's rate. It would give us a 11... $119,067.33 overlay.
At what percentage, what number?
That's 11.2.
And that's the current one?
That's what we have for last year's tax rate. At 11.1, the overlay would be 80,358,028 sets.
Did you give the percentage because we're allowed to go up to 5%?
Right. Where's the percentage? I think the pers...
Line 16, I think.
1.5.
This says 1.5 on all three. Yeah, it does.
Well, if you... At a current mill rate, it would have an overlay of $119,000.
Yeah. It's been an increase in total valuation of the town property.
Right, my only thought in the bag.
Sure.
As I said in the past years, the overlay is not, in my mind, a hidden savings account. When you raise some taxes the town does not need. Yet the town does not need to raise $119,000. There's no reason to tax the citizens. I realize some people say, well, the payments go up and down, up and down. Well, still, you shouldn't pay taxes that are not needed and authorized by the town meeting. Minimal overlay of $30,000-$35,000 is more than sufficient for the town of West Bath. It shouldn't be a hidden tax as a way of putting money in the surplus because that's where it goes when it's not spent, into general surplus. And I totally disagree. It's not authorized by town meeting, it's a tax that is not called for. If you don't pay the money, you don't raise it by taxes.
Can we get a balance on that account?
Oh, no overlay, um, yes. Where is it in the packet? What we have in the detailed report, I'm trying to sort this out. I was not really as successful as I might have. On the last section of the expense detail report.
Yep.
The one that came out at 10:46 AM this morning. That this July to June would have been for last year's. So is that last number on the page, the money we had? I believe so. But I wouldn't swear to it, quite frankly. One of the things we're up against is that we have not had the audit completed. But I believe we have enough. 10:46 was this year, so... It's like, well, Mark, it's money. Yeah, that's not right.
If you don't need, you don't raise it.
I don't think we had that much money left over. No, I think that I have...
I think last year the, oh, well, it's like $35,000-$36,000.
Yeah.
For not, the old way of taxes and then last year's commitment.
10:46.
Yeah, 10:50, that's six, I think, for the last one. I have to believe that we have, it doesn't seem like it.
No.
Well, our service must, your general service must be all of a sudden...
That's what I'm trying to find out, it seems to me we raided it for some reason.
Surplus?
Yeah, for something. But I can't remember what.
No. You raided $50,000 from this money going in the surplus this year to pay for the Irishman fund.
Right.
But it wasn't, didn't come from surplus, it came from the money going into surplus this year.
Right.
Maybe I'm thinking of last year when we had to bail out the school.
Yeah, I think...
No, I don't believe it raised surplus, we just raised the tax rate to 11.2 from 10.4 or something like that.
This, this is why we need a town administrator.
Well, we have the special town meeting to authorize to use funds.
Right, that was a...
But that wasn't this past year.
That wasn't this year's, yeah.
Well, alright, I'll listen.
How soon does this have to be determined? We should, we should decide tonight. The, the real, the real issue is the, is...
How much do we want to put, how much do we want to put on overlay?
With the insurance, we do have plenty in our reserve fund. So, I guess I would be in favor of staying with the current rate until we get a new town administrator that can next year take a better look at when we scan funding twice. And I don't want to cut us short and I don't want to grow a lot of money.
You won't cut yourself short in that sense. If you raise the same overlay money, $36,000, whatever percentage that is versus the total overall budget, that should give ample money of the overlay account. Any tax abatements or anything like that?
If we lowered it back to 11.1... Oh, David, the, to interrupt myself, the maximum overlay is allowed is 210,000.
That's 5%.
Yeah, that's at 5%, right. So if we had... If we have an $80,000 overlay at 11.1... That's ample.
It is more than ample, $80,000 is more than twice what we've had the last several years.
So what difference are we talking 11.1 and 11.2 to the average person?
Just a few bucks.
30,000, 30, 40,000.
My question would be, why wouldn't we keep it? Is this money that could be used to help us with all these town road messes that we're doing?
No, because now it's appropriated. This, this money is mainly sent, used to spend on abatements or taxes. If they were figured wrong, they'd adjust somebody's taxes. But if you don't use it all, which $80,000 I wouldn't believe you would, that next year revert to the surplus account. But at the same time, I firmly believe if you don't need it, you don't raise it. It's just not paid in tax bills to raise money they have authorized and the town doesn't even operate.
But, um, the theory being, the town meeting authorizes a certain expenditure in the warrants. The overlay is, is additional to that. So...
But again, you spent, except for abatements, in fact, I could think.
It's not authorized to be used for abatements, except for abatements. So, so only after the following year would it go into the surplus and that would only be used by authorization of town meeting anyway. So... I'm, I'm kind of inclined to vote with the 11.1.
Except that's $80,000, right?
And that's, that's still $80,000. Adam's strong recommendation before he left and that's where I've been getting mine from, it was strongly encouraging that we didn't reduce too far. Right.
Yeah, the last time we did that, A, nobody even noticed it until the following year when they had to raise what seemed like twice as much money because...
Right. Right. Whereas the 11.1 gives us a slight dip.
And nobody will notice it.
And nobody will notice it much.
They'll figure they just screwed it or something.
So I would be inclined to go with the 11.1.
Now, from this figure, $50,000's gotta come out of that to pay fund, investment fund.
No. We've already, that came out of the surplus accumulated last year. That's where essentially it's coming from, is $50,000 that's from the surplus. We don't know, we don't know idea what, what a surplus, what was put in surplus this year.
Right.
Well, actually last year's surplus is on June 30th. What added to the surplus account?
Yeah.
But we do know there's money unspent in some of the accounts, whether it's roads or other accounts.
We also know, oh, we could use all our money for these roads, that is gonna burn us eventually.
Well, we can talk about using surplus to, to do like major road project, like Sabina or something.
Right. But we, we would have to have a special town meeting to authorize that.
Yep.
But I think 11.1 has given them a decrease. And yet, given us a little bit of, if something happened, gets us fair money.
Are you sure about that? That one of the last things Adam told me is don't forget about the 50 grand. Has to come out of this to actually...
Yeah, it does, in that sense.
Actually be put in the fund.
Yes, we have to put at least $50,000 in surplus. That's why you kind of nicely knew what was going in the surplus.
No, we have to actually deposit it into the fund. We have to actually invest it.
Right, that's...
Into the...
The fund, yeah, we have to come up with an actual...
Right, we just want to come out of surplus, this year's surplus, well, last year's surplus, actually. Which this would be five of.
Yeah, because we voted, we voted to take the surplus on last, at last year's town, May's town meeting. So we come from surplus from last year, from last fiscal year. We'll have to figure out where it comes from the following year. But if we go, if we go 11.1, we have $80,000. Chances are we're not gonna spend $30,000 on abatements. Chance of...
Yeah.
If I remember right, that $50,000 had come out of last year's budget.
Yeah.
Not this actual year right now. Had to come out of last year's surplus.
Right.
And for starters, we put $35,000-$36,000 into the overlay account, this account. And we spent $6,000-$7,000 making...
No, no tax.
So we should be all set for surplus from last year to make that $50,000.
So we have the $50,000, all we have to pay.
Transfer. And I'm just feeling like people, if we don't increase things, they're okay. But if we decrease this too much and we have to increase, what are they gonna ask, what did we do? When it's only pennies now?
Yeah.
There's an, there's a, the, the simple answer to what did we do is that we don't, we don't authorize expenditures except through town meeting. Right. So if there's an increase in the tax rate, it's because there wouldn't have been an increase in expenses. Right. But they don't like to hear that, they don't like to hear it, we pre-planned.
Not when they're shelling out $30,000 of libraries in some other town and stuff like that, yeah.
Well, the, the budgeting process is pretty lean and... Right. And, um... And I think, I think generally through, throughout the year, we're very careful about authorizing even expended money. So, um, so next October, in October 19, if people have questions about their tax bills, they'll be legitimate questions and the answer will be because we appropriated the funds at town meeting. And, and again, both the municipal side and the school side have been fairly careful about, about proposing budgets, so...
Ms. David, when we were wrapping it up for budget season, what did we agree on for the overlay? Was it like $25,000?
This year?
Yeah.
I don't think we ever pick a number. It all depends on what is budgeted at town meeting for, for total tax number.
Uh-huh.
And then based on the, with the percentage of, you know, up to 5%. And it's always pretty, we never have gone ahead and, you know, traditionally it's always been around $30,000-$35,000.
Yeah. I'm almost thinking, uh...
But as far as the $50,000 per year, we probably have $30,000 left over for surplus for this last year.
Yeah.
The $10,000 we raised for overrides didn't get spent. You didn't spend all your selectmen's contingency fund. So you're also $50,000, I'm sure that's $50,000.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure there is, there.
So we're all set for this year?
We have to not forget what we're doing.
Right.
Met with Adam's concern.
Oh.
Oh, that we, well, here, on my notes, transfer.
What my concern, what I'm brewing here, something along the lines of, keep the mill rate, keep the mill rate at 11.2, that's where it is now. Earmark from that $119,000, earmark $35,000 to be the actual working funds applied to the overlay. And then whatever the balance of that is, whatever it is, next year at town meeting, has the town vote to whether they want to give it, apply it, stick it in the overlay or they want it credited against the tax, their tax. Then we don't have to disturb the mill rate.
It's not authorized by the town to do it.
You can't, I don't think, I don't think...
You can't earmark that money in one set because it's not authorized by the town to do that.
Well, we couldn't have acted upon it at town meeting because we didn't know what.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
You know, the state being as efficient as it is.
So it's like you're, you're okaying the tax rate for next year, this year?
No, I don't think we can do that. I don't think so. It would be lovely if we could. The way, at property tax school, I learned enough to make me dangerous, I did learn that some towns set the overlay as part of their warrant, which is risky because you don't, but...
You just don't know what it is.
You don't know what your, you don't know what your valuation is going to be. I do know that when we were talking budgets, Adams projected mill rate was 11.4, which is what he was telling people.
And, and the comfort level was looking more like 11.6, remember?
Yeah, I do, and he, that's the one thing he kept popping about before he left.
If you go to 11.1, you're at $80,000 overlay, yeah.
Well, I know that, I know that, but for the mill rate, I hate the mill rate number. People will, like, it's really, like it's something useful and it isn't, it's just an index. It's a, it's a, it's an equation, it's the actual overlay. And if, if you start playing around with the, the mill rate percentage, as we've experienced in the past, if we drop it and next year or the year after we have to increase it, we'll have to increase it twice as much.
But you, you guys should go if you want, you're the ones who said it. I'm just saying that $120,000 is a lot. It's taxes that weren't asked for or authorized by town meeting. It's, it's in my mind way above a normal overlay.
Yeah.
It's $120,000. It's like you just authorized a tax increase without...
But we had a town administrator who felt strongly then that should be higher, so I'm trying to figure out where the difference of opinions. One of, one of the differences is that we had not had...
The valuation numbers, that's where, that's really, that's where the extra money...
New buildings, all that.
That's where the extra money came from.
When Ron went through and, and added up the potential valuation all over town. So are we sure that's... Yes. Agreed. Yes, that's been certified. I mean, that's been audited by the state property tax people. And there were some adjustments made on the tree growth exemption. What is the official name?
Tree growth.
Tree growth. Another, another thing that didn't, that wasn't taken into consideration when we were looking at the 11.4 was the homestead exemption reimbursement has increased. So that we, we have not a lot, but we have some more money back that we wouldn't have been expecting in May when we went to town meeting. So between the increase in valuation and the increase in the, in the exemption, those were two items that skew what the, what the total would have been, that we would have figured what, what the tax would have been on. So if we lower it a little bit, that'll give people some relief. If we lower it a lot, then we run into sticker shock potentially in, in October or September of 19. So the 11.1 seems to me, seemed to me a more than generous overlay without running into the, the shock of next year if we don't have the same kind of increase in valuation.
I mean, even though we're spending more than we did last year, if, if we drop it down to 11.1, we can look the public straight in the eye and say, we lowered your taxes. And I don't like that. I don't.
You don't like lowering taxes? P, I'm surprised.
Well, I know, no, you spent more money than last year.
Right, and we're not talking about penis, we're not talking, we're talking about saving a few pennies and maybe sticker shocking people later, that's what worries us.
And we're not talking about, we're not talking, we're talking about saving a few pennies and maybe sticker shocking people later. That's what bothers me. If you, if this is only gonna lower eleven one and eleven two, an individual taxpayer by a couple of dollars.
It's about, um, yes. Well, I figure out exactly, it's about, uh, three hundred and forty.
Mill rate's not meant to be a savings account.
Right.
Three thousand.
But again, yeah, all we think Adam was pounding this on before he left was this.
Well, that was his last budget.
About three hundred, three hundred bucks on a hundred thousand house.
That's the only thing really that he talked to me about before he left. Don't, don't cut yourself short. Don't underestimate.
And the auditor, the auditor's, well, he's pounded on me because of my insistence on doing it last year and he hates it.
It's an unauthorized tax.
So the library.
So let me.
More, more town meetings, this, this is not one.
If, if, so what'd you say it's, uh, what did you figure the difference is?
Around three hundred bucks.
So if it's eleven, if it's eleven two, people pay three hundred dollars more?
Yeah, uh, I think so. Maybe a little more than that. I don't have my top later. Where is, there it is. Nancy, okay, give me a minute here.
What's that jumping?
I have a dog. He used to watch, watch with my mother. And when the music came on, he'd go. He's my dog. Only dog I ever knew that.
Four thousand.
When you said bath time, he'd go get into the tub.
One mil.
Didn't always come when you called. He'd get busted.
All right, so point one mil is four hundred twenty two dollars. Point one mil. So that's what we'd be, if we dropped it, that's how much we'd be saving per one hundred thousand house. So a tax per one hundred thousand house is, let's see.
Consider eleven one.
Is. Tandine. Oops. Times.
A few dollars, that's like four hundred dollars.
Times eleven point one.
One fill on your oil tank.
Put on one hundred dollars. Eleven hundred and ten for one hundred thousand versus.
Were you saying a couple of dollars? I was thinking a couple of dollars.
With those.
That's more than a couple of dollars.
Yeah. That's an awful thing.
Or new windows or what?
Not quite a vacation in Florida.
So I guess I have to support your eleven one.
Okay.
Sound motion? Make a motion that we go with the eleven one.
All right. I'll think of it.
And all those in favor?
Thank you for being able to add that. That really helped. Thank you, Peter.
Ah, you're welcome. I, I, I'm jumping back and forth between figuring out what a mil is versus what a tenth of a mil is versus what a hundred thousand dollars worth of house would be taxed, it's just.
Right.
You have to start to think about where you're going.
Right.
What you're trying to get at.
So these are the papers that get signed. We need to sign on this page of the assessors certification of assessment. This is the authorization for the warrant, for the taxes, and the certificate of commitment. And this goes to the state.
Oh, he's just lowered the taxes. That's twice what I want.
It's, in my mind, a fair thing to do. Cause you don't need to, you don't spend.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I think that people just need to understand, that we all need to understand, that sometimes things will go up and sometimes things will go down and it depends on what the valuation is and, um, homestead exemptions and that sort of thing, so. Going down is an unusual place for taxes.
Oh, it happens all the time in West Bay.
Could be nice to know what we put in the surplus this current year.
And maybe next year we can make a change.
And then the opposing every year, we, we have to really crank on that.
Probably seven fifty thousand surplus.
I know that Julie has the information and it's.
Six hundred thousand.
It's that I do not ask for it properly.
So maybe we need to pass some of that road.
Well, just from what we're hearing, it seems like more and more people are coming in with certain road meetings, you know, they're good people.
We know it, possible next year we got a fund, Sabina.
Sabina, yeah.
And that's gonna cross us two hundred thousand dollars. And I think that's possible today.
Right, and I haven't had a chance to check on that. I don't even know.
We can sign all these?
Yes, we do. We can do it.
Don't get them sent back, Peter.
Hmm?
Don't admit wanting to get them sent back.
It's happened.
I know. It's bounding. Especially when they want booties.
We'll check them again if we believe. Um, the other thing that happened just before, I left on Friday, so too late to get it onto the warrant. We have some estimates for some further, um, road work. And I included the estimates in the packet. And the one thing I did manage to do, I believe, was, um, on that first page of the financial stuff, you have, um, the general road. And this is, this is for this year. So this, um, on, on the printout that says page one and it's, the timing of it is ten fifty eight M. And Julie gave us a general, the general road and what's been expended so far in this fiscal year. So the estimates that, um, Steve submitted for the further road work come to about thirty thousand dollars. So it looks to me as though we should have money enough in the account for that to be done, for those things to be done during good weather.
What is left of the general road account?
Hundred and twelve.
There's a hundred and twelve.
Does that include like the tree trimming and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, he's done with tree trimming, right?
That was thirty thousand.
Yeah.
That was thirty thousand, I think.
Yeah, we have, the unexpended balance, um,
tree trim is twenty thousand and he still says it's fourteen thousand unexpended.
That may be, no, that may be not quite accurate because there's been some tree trimming that's been done.
And the hot topping, there's a hundred thousand, hundred and ten?
Uh, let's see.
Let's see, seventy five.
Yeah, I think it was this year.
Yeah.
What is that?
Forty eight left.
Somebody's done that for, for, here and then shimmying and stuff.
He's, he's done a fair bit.
Left a hot top in any places we dig up.
Right. Right, and there's a little bit of ditching, um, and some shoulder work and mud road.
Who's?
Rockweed.
Bridge point? Or that crack?
He's done some work on some of the cracks.
Okay.
Um, grading on, on paper point, grading on shoulders, patching clusters point. Gold rock, gold ditching and shimming.
Shimming or mud road.
Shimmer, shimming on mud road. So, um, I think we should, I think we should authorize those. They're all under, they're all on the, on the, on the town policy for this sort of thing. These would all be automatically authorized by the town administrator, but in the absence, I thought we should probably take a look at it.
Probably should because who knows when the bad weather starts.
It's September now.
Right.
Exactly.
Right. We've got a few more warm days and we, we should get the hot topping taken care of while it's hot.
Only before they shut down the fire.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of time.
No. So if we wanna authorize these, then, um, I'll call tomorrow and let them know.
I make a motion that we authorize all the estimates for the excavation for what he's provided.
For certain.
And all in favor? Okay.
Good.
Yes, and, um, we, I, I haven't had time to go looking for the, um, for that road, road works program, but it's on my list, so we'll, I'm gonna try very hard to get it, um, by the end of September so Steve and I can take a look at it, get it up and running. Anything else that should come for the good of the order? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, could be a session.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, absolutely. Let's do it. Thank you all.
Thank you.